And we are live on Facebook. Good evening and welcome to the Old Colony School Committee meeting of Wednesday, November 18th, 2020. This evening, we are joined by a significant number of people, many whom serve in a volunteer capacity on our advisory board. Before we begin the meeting, I would like to thank them for the time that they dedicate in the absence of our ability to hold our annual dinner. We were able to meet with everyone and again, greatly appreciate your guidance and direction and insight as it pertains to our programming. We look forward to introducing you at a later time in the meeting. At this point in time, I would like to just make my way through the grid here and speak to the people who are in attendance in no particular order. Sarah Griffith, business manager. Isabel Darcy, student representative to the school committee. Jolene Costa, secretary to the school committee and assistant to the superintendent director. Shirley Burke, school committee chair. Rochester, David Hughes, Rochester. Steven Cassidy, Mattapoiset. Don Williams, Carver. Richard Damash, Mattapoiset. Donald Foster, Lakeville. Robert Marshall, Lakeville. Maurice Saint-Amand, Akushnet. Evelyn Boulay, Akushnet. Justin Broder, Akushnet. Sharon Cruz, Rochester. Gary Mansfield, Lakeville. Nancy Souza, Mattapoiset. And did I say John Williams, Carver?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I've named John Banzel, John of Carver. Have I missed any of our committee members? Okay. Also, we have a long list of guests in attendance. We will not go down the list of guests at this point in time. I would like to turn the meeting over to school committee chair Shirley Burke.
Welcome, everybody. I would ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is sacred.
Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In this month of dedicated to remembrance and giving of thanks, I'd ask that we take a moment to remember military personnel, both past and present, first responders, essential workers, everybody who goes out of their way to make our lives the best they can be under these trying circumstances. Thank you. I'm going to turn it back to the superintendent for a very special recognition of outstanding student at Old Colony. Aaron?
Thank you, Shirley. It is with great pleasure that we have the opportunity on an annual basis to recognize our students through the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. This evening, I will screen share. It gives me great pleasure to share with the public this press release that we put together. And it states that the MAS, M A S S Certificate of Excellence is awarded annually to a high school student who has distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school career. In selecting the award winner each year, the superintendent director looks for not only academic success within our classrooms, but for demonstrations of leadership and initiative within the school and the greater Old Colony community. It is with great pleasure this evening that we present the 2020-2021 M A S S Certificate of Excellence to Isabel Darcy, who studies in our CAD program. She's from Carver, Massachusetts, and also the representative to the school committee. Isabel is a member of the class of 2021. She's currently participating in co-op with Griffith and Barry and Wareham and serves as the senior class president. Isabel is currently ranked number one in the class of 2021. She brings great poise and maturity to her role as the student representative to the Old Colony School Committee and also serves as a member of the National Honor Society, Non-Traditional Club, Student Advisory Board, varsity volleyball team, and Skills USA. Isabel is a dancer and has participated in competition at a regional level. Isabel's brother is a freshman at Old Colony and she comes from a legacy of Old Colony alumni. It is with, again, pride, pleasure, and happiness that we present this on behalf of the entire school community. So we'd like to call you up for an appropriate socially-distanced presentation in case you're parents. I would like to take a photo and I know that the folks at Old Colony not be able to see this presentation, but I'd like to just present this on behalf of our school community. And congratulations to you. Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to turn this over now to Beth, if it's okay with you, Aaron, for the advisory.
Hey, so thank you, everyone, for allowing us to hold our joint advisory board and school committee meetings. We have several folks in attendance representing different programs. So we'll kick this off with Scott Weagle for automotive technology. And as for those of you at home, if you could just unmute and you can read the summary that the department sent to you. And sometimes if unmuting doesn't work, you can hold the spacebar down as well. So go ahead, Scott, when you're ready.
Want me to start off? All right.
That was great.
Put together what I was going to read to everyone tonight as far as the automotive shop was doing very, very well. So the department continues to monitor industry trends and make adjustments to what their curriculum has needed. They continue to meet or exceed state and SC education foundation standards. Department prides itself on providing the students with an automotive technology education that is second to none, using the latest technology equipment. As far as all the equipment in the shop, the grant they received last year, everything is up to date. They have the latest in the diagnostic tools, scan tools, their new align machine and rack, entire service and equipment. So the shop is right up, right at the top with all the equipment they have. On the co-op part of it, they're doing very well, but most of the whole senior class is out. The biggest holdback right now is they do have a lot of job openings, but it's the kids being able to get their driver's license. So that seems to be a little bit of the holdup now. And hopefully they'll get through that and they're hoping that in January that the junior class will begin to participate in the co-op also. If you have any questions?
Any questions for the school committee? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Weagle. Next, we'll be recording on business technology. I'll be reading the report from that department. Last spring, sophomores and seniors participated in the Titan Business Challenge, as we probably remember, at UMass Dartmouth for the first time. One of our teams, it was senior Barrett Cackett, Kyle Wright, and a sophomore who is now a junior, Jake Andrews, earned the highest score in two, three rounds. And they were awarded second place overall for their performance. They plan to participate in the Titan Challenge again this year, should it be held at UMass Dartmouth. Business Technology did a great job also at Skills USA Districts last February. Students won first place with senior Matthew Johnson. And second place, which again was senior Kyle Wright in the customer service category in first place, one of our sophomores who is now a junior, Ryan Crane, in the technical computer applications, and they'll be competing in these categories and more again this year. Old Colony School Store, the claw shop, is about to bring their items to an online store that's new for this year. They plan to have a soft opening sometime in the winter, selling apparel and more. Co-op, they have one eligible senior and five eligible juniors for when co-op becomes available once the state lists the moratorium on co-op, hopefully for January. And their exploratory program feedback is great, the number of interested students. This is a slight increase from last year is what they're finding. We have tonight with us Madison Lopes, who is the general advisory board committee member for CAD drafting. Madison, if you could present the summary for that department. Thank you.
Hi. So summary I have is our students are involved with the design and construction document creation for several projects in-house and within the community, including the OC Lobby Interior, Automotive Overflow Parking Lot, the Buzzards Bay Area Habitat for Humanity in Mattapoiset, Pope Park, Outdoor Pergola in Akushnet, the Freetown Lakeville Athletic Association Ball Field Expansion, the Akushnet River Valley Clubhouse Preliminary Study. We currently have three seniors placed on co-op. Currently, current employers include Griffith and Vary Consulting Engineers, New Bedford Housing Authority, and Alpha Survey. We're continuing to seek viable employment opportunities and have leads with two additional employers. Five students from the junior class have passed the SolidWorks CSWA exam, which is an industry-recognized certification. All of our seniors graduated with the American Design Drafting Appreciation Recognition. We currently have the support from the advisory board to seek the following shop equipment. We've received 11 free used monitors to assist with the dual monitors used for the CAD operators from an advisory board member, Cynthia Spence of the New Bedford Housing Authority. Thank you, Cynthia. Two smart boards, one for the shop and one for the related classroom. There's a new laser cutter to assist with prototyping and presentation skills with proper interface software, Corel. There's two new computers and a third of existing, and a third of the existing monitors, approximately, that are nine years old, to be replaced physical year 21 each year for the next three years. No monitors were purchased with the new computers two years ago. They suggest keep, we suggest keeping the old monitors to assist students with multiple documents to open. Industry standards is about two or three monitors per station currently. They've received 11 of the free monitors to assist with dual monitors for the CAD operators from the advisory member Cynthia Spence. New small color format printer, a copier eight by 11, and an 11 by 17 printer with color to assist with presentation renderings and student portfolio development.
Can you push this for the CAD drafting department? Thank you very much, Madison.
Thank you.
For computer science, David Beckhold is with us. David, if you could give the summary for computer science, please?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everybody. This is representing Stu Stussy and Matthew Johnson, I believe his name is. So for the computer science curriculum, there's a new element added to the program. AP Computer Science for the juniors and seniors, and I guess just the juniors next year. Senior curriculum starting in 21, 22, 2021 and 22. Elements of that new curriculum is it's project-based, there are project management elements and Git, G I T, Git version control system. So there's an expansion of what they're doing, looks to be a little bit hands-on in project management. There's been new equipment added to the department. They've added Raspberry Pis, those are handheld computer devices, something called Arduino kits. Those are open source electronic prototyping kits for the upperclassmen projects and teachers. They've got electronic components and sensors for I O T, Internet of Things projects. So that sounds pretty cool. And some HP laptops and tablets were purchased last year after the advisory board meeting. So decent amount of equipment to help the students be successful.
David, are you frozen?
And I think that's it.
So the only additional item under that was co-op. I don't know if you had said that. I think you froze for a few minutes there, David.
Oh.
But they're still seeking viable employers for co-op opportunities for their students.
Yep.
So I know that the advisory boards help them. Any questions for computer science? Yes?
David, is there any equipment needs? I know you said that you have a lot of new equipment, but is there anything that's still needed?
At this point, nothing was passed on to me in the summary that I received as far as needed equipment. It was just really a documentation of equipment that's been purchased this year, but I can certainly take the question back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To my knowledge, they're pretty up to date. We might be looking at new just work tables and I'll be working with Sarah on that, but I'll leave them out just for the physical layout of the space. Thank you very much, David.
You're welcome.
Nicole Lutner, she's here representing cosmetology. Nicole, could you give the summary for cosmetology? Here she comes. Oh, the audio isn't working. Okay. So cosmetology, the program has been slightly changed due to the COVID guidelines for the state board of cosmetology and barbering. Students now must test with face masks, face shields, and goggles. Students must also wear gloves throughout the entire test in full smock. Aprons are no longer allowed. They're starting to implement some of the training with their seniors, especially who will be sitting for the state board, and I know that they're practicing with all of the proper PPE for them. The upper-class clinic side of the shop, grades 11 and 12, is not currently open to the public, but students have been earning their practice hours working on mannequins themselves and practicing hands for, on hands for nail care. Grade 10 students have been using the mannequins and practice hands as well. Their visits to the sending town council of aging have been suspended due to COVID. The annual field trip, the next level hair show, has also been suspended for this year. Although they do offer virtual hair show, instructors feel as though the students will benefit much more from an in-person than they'd rather wait for that time. All grade 10, 11, and 12 students were issued a pivot kit, and pivot is in kind of quotation marks. This is, this was a kit of supplies that the instructors had put together in anticipation that we would have to flip to be able to go remote, where the students in cosmetology already have a kit that they bring to and from school on their vocational weeks. The instructors put together additional supplies that students could use should that flip have to happen overnight. That way, the students don't miss a beat with their education. Kit contains extra materials, mannequin scissors and hair products, and will be used if we need to do a flip to virtual teaching. Any questions with cosmetology?
Two.
Yes.
Are we supplying all the PPE that cosmetology needs?
Yes, we are.
And any needs, equipment needs on EPA?
Not, yes. What, so their frameworks just changed over. They, they just went through a frameworks revision from the state. The state is requiring that they start to teach the different types of hair. So right now, all students have been issued what's considered a straight hair mannequin. In addition to that, students will have to practice on a curly hair. And I'm not going to use the correct, there's three different types of mannequins with different types of hair textures that they're going to need to practice on. In addition to that, they're also going to need hair ovens to perform particular type of hair technique for ethnic hair. I don't know if Nicole has anything else to add. Nicole, if you want to type that into, if you need, if you want to type that into the chat, that would be great. But I know I've just collected that information for their needs and we're working on pricing and whatnot for, for what that is. That was just rolled out three weeks ago, so it's relatively new information.
Thanks, Beth.
You're welcome. The next department that we'll hear from is Culinary Arts. Cam DeBrassio, if you could unmute and deliver summary, that would be awesome.
Good evening, everybody. For the culinary arts department, this year we have 13 seniors in the culinary arts department that have successfully passed the National Restaurant Association Serve Safe Manager exam and the Massachusetts allergen exam. After placing first in the state in 2020, the department will be competing again in Massachusetts Restaurant Association Pro Start Invitational Culinary Competition in May. The competition at the national level has been canceled this year due to COVID-19. This year, we will be, also be preparing a team for the management competition. Students must complete a business plan for a restaurant and present it with marketing strategies. We placed third in the competition in 2020. As of January, the Cougar's Den will be starting curbside pickup to the public after purchasing a new point-of-sale system that will allow credit cards to be used in the Cougar's Den. The department also has a tower garden, hydroponic garden, that herbs and produce grown were used to educate students on fresh produce and how to grow and harvest from our hydroponic growth system.
Thank you very much, Cam. Any questions for culinary arts?
Same one, equipment. It's one of the, Beth, it's one of the most valuable things that happens at this time. And us know what's needed.
Yep.
I think in the five-year plan, they're looking to update their original ovens from what I was told.
Correct. Other than that, again, they're working on pricing.
And then a smart board for related was also mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cam. Robert Whitlow will be recording for electronics. Whitlow?
Okay, this is the, the list that was given. It says, "We continue to place students in the Old Colony co-op program. Approximately 60% of the senior class is currently participating in the program. We continue to integrate new technology into the classroom via Zoom, Google Classroom, and other online resources. Recently acquired Mike Holt Capacitor Online Training Program, which will utilize with all grade levels of both onsite and remote learning, provided our students with the latest and greatest training materials and soft resources. Presently, our recently completed open house promotional video showcasing our students and their work. In addition, the video will also be used to educate, recruit potential freshman students in exploratory program. Department continues to seek first-choice students for the new freshman class during the exploratory process. They began creation of a database to track additionally needed supplies, materials to be shared with the advisory board members and industry partners. Recently replaced the aging extension ladders and completed new field lighting for the athletic field." As far as new equipment, I have nothing on that, although I know from when they were there last that they're, they would like to be able to do something with the upgrading and repair of the house, which has really gone into disrepair over the years. And you know, it's one of those things that the school needs to figure out a way to be able to keep maintaining because there's a lot of broken windows and, and broken pots that are not working properly. So other than that, unless Beth knows of something else, I don't really have anything else.
No, that was the one major concern was the trading house. And I know right now CAD drafting is working on the existing condition report for that house that will then be passed over. And I know Jean Downey was working on that with her students, almost to a point where that can be passed over to Carpentry, who will then do an estimate, who'll do a phased look at how we can replace the components for that house. What's nice about that house, the way the structure is built, the walls of the house can actually be taken apart and it can be done in stages. So hopefully we will have that soon. Electronics Engineering, thank you very much, Mr. Whitlow. Appreciate it. Electronics Engineering Technologies, enrollment in the department continues to grow, 26 out of their 30 available spaces partly filled, and they expect a full freshman class again this year. Once again, they're requesting a third instructor be added to their program. The addition of instructor, instructor will afford them the opportunity to develop a strawberry program and provide uninterrupted direct instruction to their students. The department will also need to continue modernizing its equipment. On the list for updates, we test equipment as well as projection, a projection microscope that they can use to display images throughout the smart board system. Last year, the robotics team qualified for regional finals. They had excellent participation with students from many different shops being involved with great enthusiasm and the largest team to date. Unfortunately, the pandemic forced cancellation of this event. This year, there's no, there hasn't been a significantly calendar events participated in due to pandemic. The department, in collaboration with the electrical department, will be installing a PA system in the field house as well as in the cafeteria. And Mr. Dutcher will be attending manufacturer training in Fannick America to become a certified trainer, provided Fannick doesn't suspend their in-person training due to the pandemic, which is what happened last year. This will allow students to eventually receive an industry certification in the operation of the Fannick Industrial Robotic Arm. Future design layout consideration may be needed to the shop due to the required clearance as needed to run the Fannick arm. I've been working with Mr. Dutcher on how to, how we can possibly solve that, given the space that we're in. And more information will be gathered at the time of training. Graphic Communications, that's again going to be me. They're looking at the Adobe certification for their students. They talk to their advisors and they have full advisory board support for researching and acquiring funds needed to provide the Adobe certification for their students before they graduate. This will be advantageous coming out of high school and they're doing a planning of it this year, so that way their hope is to be able to implement this next year and then funding approval. Cool Science, their students have once again placed at the University of Lowell's Cool Science Art Contest. Sophomores and juniors are working on designs for the 2021 Cool Science Contest, contest as we speak. For health careers, 100% of students are employed and cleared for corporate education. There have been some grave challenges with that, keeping our students on co-op, especially within the healthcare facilities due to the pandemic and whatnot. So right now, a lot of those students are being pulled from their co-op due to the cases in the nursing homes. Senior classes waiting to hear back from the American Red Cross regarding their scheduling, regarding rescheduling their CNA exam. The exam was scheduled for March 25th, but was postponed due to COVID. We recently received notification from the state that they have opened and will begin testing in December. So we're on the list to be able to make those testing dates. And we just have to wait to hear from the state on that. However, 100% of the senior classes working under state-issued waiver, allowing the students who have completed a CNA program but have not yet been officially tested to work in a nursing facility. So that's how all of our seniors are placed in healthcare facilities at this time. The junior classes experiencing challenges with clinical placements, as I'm sure you can imagine, local nursing facilities are not allowing outside visitors into their facility due to the pandemic. The clinical hours are required for students to complete their CNA examinations. And once the facility clears, visitors and students to enter the building. We still may have a challenge with transportation due to the social distancing requirements. However, I'm working with the health instructors to hopefully remedy that. And you know, obviously, as you can imagine, if the program has to go fully remote, all grades, skills, mask, all skill mastery for all grades could be affected and impact future clinical placement and testing. Right now, there's no large equipment needs at this time for our health careers department. And the emerging technologies is this year, they received a new lifeline, lifeline mannequin that weighs 150 pounds, and that's been added to their department. Any questions on health careers?
Only one, I'm sorry. It's always a question.
Quite all right.
The seniors who are The seniors who are being pulled from co-op, what's happening with them? Are they just being brought back into school?
They're being brought back into school, and the textbook that they use is the Mosby textbook. There's several chapters that go beyond their framework scope. So they'll be delving into those chapters that typically aren't covered because it's outside of the scope of the Health Careers framework.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional questions? Okay, next, House and Mill Carpentry. The accomplishments for House and Mill Carpentry program constructed, they completed the computer lab remodel project, which was in their shop. They also were able to participate with the Buzzard Bay Habitat House in Montipoisia. And they also built a firewood shed. The acquisitions, the program was able to secure 24 new laptops for the shop and related classrooms, which are used quite frequently, not only, you know, in related, but also in the shop area, which is nice to see. Cooperative education currently, there's one senior place. However, I know that we're working on getting a second senior place for that program. And the department objectives is to expand the shop space for more structure framing opportunities, continue replacing program hand tools, continue the partnership with Habitat for Humanity, and expanding the shed house building program and logistics. Prioritized capital equipment list is their surface planer, which is a 31-inch Northfield Surface Planer. Though not original to the building, it's approximately a 25-year-old machine, and it's starting to show its age. The most obvious is the noise level emitted with the surface hardwoods and the cutter head bearing is starting to show signs of wear. And now I spoke with Sarah, we're working on possibly replacing a bearing for this piece of equipment. However, we may need to replace the entire piece of equipment, depending on what happens with that part. In the shop, they're going to be requesting two smart boards with overhead projectors or, you know, working with pile on that. So it could be the Epson board overheads, which we put in a variety of the classrooms. But that will allow them to present relative trade information, also view blueprint information as a group rather than individually. On their five-year plan, all equipment is currently working okay, except for the planer that we talked about. But plans will need to be made to eventually replace items such as the existing vacuum for the CNC as well as the 16-inch Northfield jointer. That is original to the building, it's 40 years old, and eventually will require replacement between five and 10 years from now. And also, the vacuum system, which is original to the building, that system, we need to start taking a look at how to replace that system as well. Any questions for-
I got a question for Doug to answer.
Oh, thank goodness Doug's sitting right behind me.
That surface planer. How many do you have in the shop?
We have the third, that big one that we use almost all the time, every day. We have the 24-inch Powermatic. It's more of a homeowner-grade machine.
But you have something that that one needs to be rebuilt or replaced?
Yeah.
Something to use in the meantime?
Yeah, we have a plan in place that Beth and I have got. We're going to try to get through the year with how it is right now. The company that services it, the gentleman assured me that nothing catastrophic can happen if the bearing goes. So we would replace it if the bearing goes, with hopes to replace it at the end of the year if money is available. But it is an expensive piece of equipment, and it's a six-month lead time. It costs me.
Any additional questions for House and Mill Carpentry? Okay, moving along to machine and tool. Their co-op placement numbers are excellent again this year, with 90% of the senior class participating in the co-op program. Current employers include, once again, AutoCAD Medical, AA Precision Machine, Lockheed Martin, D&amp;D Machine, Triangle Engineering, and Sinclair Manufacturing. New placement sites include Triangle Engineering and Lockheed Martin. We continue to receive extremely positive feedback from employers on the work ethic and trade knowledge displayed by our students. The department is also recently purchased tool carts supplied with 1-3-inch micrometer sets, tap wrenches, files, deburring tools, and deadwood hammers. So each student has their own cart, and that way no materials need to be shared, you know, during this time within the department. They've recently received donations from FH Peterson. They donated a Starrett optical comp-
comparator.
Comparator, thank you. Protrack donated 13 seats of Protrack offline programming software. As far as I know right now, there are no high equipment needs for machine and tools. I know they're currently working on their budget, but I wasn't made aware of any high priorities there. I know they're in good shape from the grants we received a few years back. Any questions for machine and tool? Okay, last but certainly not least, our Metal Fabrication adjoining technology department. As you know, the department received the Capital Skills Grant last year, and they have a slew of new equipment that was installed over the summer by our wonderful maintenance department. Included 135-ton CNC press brake, a 200-amp CNC plasma cutting table, a 25-kV rocker arm swab welder, a 500-amp multiprocessor welder, a 4-foot-by-8-foot welding fixture cable. Obviously, the equipment's going to allow them and is allowing them to train their students with new technologies that are currently being used out in industry. Again, in that program, co-op education program is thriving. They're able to secure jobs for every senior, although two of them decided to opt out and stay in shop. Currently, 10 of the 12 seniors are employed and participating in the program, and the job prospects are looking promising for the junior group as well once they become available in January. And we're hoping they become. So right now, as you may or may not know, the state has put a moratorium on co-op opportunities for our juniors. It's only available for seniors right now. I know we're waiting for the state to lift that, and they are supposed to be meeting. They're waiting for their time to come up to have that meeting with the Commissioner of Education. So we, as a group of vocational coordinators, together with MAVA, have spoken directly with our liaison with DESI on encouraging, highly encouraging that moratorium gets lifted for our juniors. Also, all of the senior students have earned their Hot Work certification. Moving forward, beginning this year, students will receive this training during their sophomore year. So this year, we'll be training both sophomores and juniors in Hot Work. Students plan to compete in the Skills USA Welding Textbook Competition, not to begin with, electrical pipe welding competitions. And we're crossing our fingers, all of that happens this time in the spring. They're still part of the American Welding Society, currently use the A W S Educational Library modules as part of the comprehensive training. Those were purchased back in the spring when we did our immediate flip to remote learning. Equipment purchases that they'll be planning for is a virtual welding training simulator incorporated as a supplement and enhancement to their traditional welding training methods. The technology facilitates hands-on group learning in the classroom. And because the virtual welding systems can't connect to the monitors, the instructor, the student welder, and the rest of the students in the class can see what's going on. I'm sorry, can't connect to the monitors. Robotic welding, and they'll also be looking for a robotic welding cell to provide students with skills related to advanced manufacturing. They'll also be planning to repair the vertical bandsaw and hydraulic plate shear in their departments. Any questions for Metal Fabrication? And thank you all for your time. Thank you very much to all of you who participated and joined us tonight. I appreciate you representing your departments. I will send out in meeting minutes to all of you to make summaries.
Beth, one question.
Sure.
The only shop that wasn't spoken to regarding equipment needs was Business Tech.
Business Tech, where basically they're looking for workstations, meaning the tables, furniture for their classroom, as well as, I know they're going to be looking, they're looking at textbooks right now. Other than that, their equipment, they had the purchases of the laptops last year, so they're in really good shape as well. And we're also, we've just taken a look at the credit card usage, so that way they can do the online purchases for the school store.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for everybody who has participated in that. You are more than welcome to remain at the meeting, but if you want to scoop, nobody on this end will be offended. Public participation. Is there anybody with anything?
If I may, just real quickly. I want to reiterate our appreciation to our advisory members. Your time is certainly appreciated, and I also wanted to take a moment to just read into the minutes, members of the administrative team and staff who are in attendance, now that I've had the opportunity to move my way through the screen. Our principal, Mike Parker, vocational coordinator, Bethany Patello, academic coordinator, Katie Tuccinardi, technology director, Kyle O'Neil, athletic director, Matthew Trahan, assistant principal, Gary Linehan, one of our school nurses, Deb Lovett, carpentry instructors, Doug Sims and Rick Peliquin, science instructor, Michelle Falcon, and parent and instructor of history, Heather Darcy. I'm also, am I missing anyone? Okay, I just want to thank everyone for being here, and I'll turn the meeting back over to Chairperson.
The offer went out for public participation, hearing none. I'm going to move to the consent agenda. I'm going to wait the reading of the items and look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. Really, the idea of consent agenda, there's that there isn't any questions. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the operating statement is included in your packet. Does anyone have any questions for Sarah? Hearing none, we continue on. The warrants are available for review, there is no old business. We return to an item from last month. There is the superintendent director's salary. I'm looking for a motion to approve a salary of one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll make that motion, but I'd like to speak to it once it comes on. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Marshall, floor is yours.
Madam Chairman, we need to remove it from the table first. We need to take the motion off the table. We thought it was tabled last month. The motion was tabled.
It was tabled.
You have to take it off, you have to get it off the table. Make a motion, we remove it from the table.
Okay, we have a motion to remove-
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of removing it from being tabled?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? No, okay, so it has been removed from being tabled, thank you. We also now have a motion on the floor to approve the salary. And a second, Mr. Marshall, the floor is yours.
Yes, I apologize to all of you folks for my vote last month. At our last meeting, I was sort of taken by surprise by John's motion to postpone or table or whatever it was, the issue the superintendent's raised. And I believe that I voted in haste. Within hours, I realized that I had made a mistake in voting for the motion to table. And I, even though I think I understood the intention, but because I don't think I finally came to think that I did understand it, I think my vote was based on incomplete information. Regardless, I fear that my vote sent the wrong message. In my opinion, the amount of money we're talking about is but a fraction of what I believe I'd like us to pay. And I ask surely therefore for another chance to, in my opinion, right what I thought was a wrong. So that's pretty much what I had to say.
There were a few members who had requested that this come on back on. And as we had said last month, we knew this would be revisited very shortly. The amount of the increase is what is budgeted in this year's budget. So, any other discussion? Having a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Should we be taking roll call votes on things of votes of this nature? There's a question.
There was an "need to", unless you feel that it requires, but typically, it's only going into executive session that we do a roll call vote.
Or through, when it's on Zoom, but this is a hybrid.
No, it's being clearly identified, you know, hands going up and things like that. But to your point, when we are completely Zoom, yes.
And we also have had no opposition to any of the votes.
Correct. All right. There is a recommended action to approve the revised FY21 budget revenue and FY21 member town assessments. We will have an explanation of this, but I would ask that we, if someone would move the recommended action forward by endorsing the motion. Have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and I am going to turn this either to Mo or to Sarah.
Well, I'm just going to go right over and give it to Sarah, because she does a good job of explaining it.
Sarah?
The Budget Subcommittee has been meeting to discuss the FY21 budget revenue sources. Now that the numbers have been released from the state for Chapter 70, Chapter 71, projected transportation reimbursement, we feel comfortable to move forward to the full committee with FY21's operating budget, revenue sources, and revised member town assessments. Does anyone have any questions?
The assessments will go down for four of the five towns. The only community that it will go up for is the town of Lakeville, and it is a small increase. One of the changes that happened because the state gave us numbers so late that the required local contributions changed, and that had an impact on the work that we had done. There was nothing we could do to prevent that. This is an effort now to correct. I can't imagine any of the communities having an issue. And as I said, it's a minimal increase for Lakeville.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Paul?
I'd just like to confirm what I think I remember from our Budget Subcommittee meeting, that largely, the small increase that we in Lakeville have has to do with an increase in minimal school contribution. Is that correct, Sarah? Sarah, where'd you go?
I'm here.
I had you on the screen, and now I've lost you. Is that correct, Sarah?
Yes, it's correct.
Okay, and second item, am I correct that Lakeville will not have to go back to town meeting to amend this figure because we had already voted more than this figure?
Yes, Lakeville voted an amount for assessment higher than the initial certified assessment, so they will not need to return to town meeting. It will be less than what they voted in their town meeting warrant.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Next recommended action is to accept the agreement with First Student to amend 2020, 2021 school year contract due to extenuating circumstances surrounding the COVID pandemic. Have a motion to move? Can I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Sarah?
First student came to me with a request to, for the school committee to consider amending their contract for this year to a tiered payment based on whether or not we close school. The circumstances surrounding this amendment are based on whether or not we have to close school for a certain amount of time, and whether or not the drivers stay on First Student's payroll. I have reviewed it. The school committee's attorney has reviewed it. I do believe it is a fair agreement, and so we're bringing it forward to the school committee to see if you will vote in favor of amending the contract for COVID-19 potential closures.
Any questions?
Can you give us a quick breakdown of the changes?
Sure. Yes. I just don't want to speak incorrectly and have it in the minutes, so let's. The first change comes with the beginning of the school year. We did not have students using our transportation for the first five days of the school year, which is a change. First student is asking for 40% payment for those days. The second part is a short term or partial term closure. If in-person learning is canceled for a period of one or more consecutive school days up to 10 school days, the staffing for the buses will stay on with First Student's payroll, and Old Colony will pay 80% of our contract.
For the first 10 days?
One to 10 days, yes, right. That's important here because if it extends beyond 10 days, per this contract, it would change. That brings us to the midterm closure. If in-person learning is canceled for a period of 11 or more consecutive school days up to 20 consecutive school days at any time during the 2020, 2021 school year, the district would pay 40% of their contract. And then we come to the long-term closure. And this is just to summarize, it's quite a deal here. If in-person learning is canceled for a period of 21 or more consecutive school days for any time during the 2020, 2021 school year, the district degrees of a 35%. It's considered a long-term closure, and at that point, First Student may lay off the school bus drivers that are associated with their contract. They may or may not, depending on their circumstances within First Student, so I can't speak for that. The last part of this just references the Mass General Law use that was put into place in the spring. There is a chance that that use extends to the FY21 school year. It has not as of now. And that just again speaks to us being approved to pay vendors for continuity of services and readiness, which is what we did in the spring.
Any other questions? Sarah, I have.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Paul.
Sarah, the 11 to 20 days and paying the 40%, is my memory correct that that's what we paid in the spring?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sarah, is, will this contract be retroactive for the recent closure?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. Any other questions, Sarah? If we are prepared to vote, we have a motion in a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We have some recommended action on some donations. The first one is recommended action to approve the donation of a Starrett HB350 optical comparator with digital readout. Magnification lenses and precision rotary device from Martin, Urban, and Dave Stewart of FH Peterson Machine Corp., valued at $6,000 for the machine and tool technology department.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I'll comment that that's very nice equipment, and I think that's a hell of a great gift for the school. That's good stuff.
Okay.
That's very generous of them.
We have a motion and a second and an endorsement of the good stuff, so anybody, if we're ready to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? I would assume that this will come with a letter of thanks on behalf of the school. Thank you. The next is to approve the donation of a 40-inch Vizio Smart TV, valued at $299 for the culinary ops department from Mrs. Doris Cabusio.
Correct.
That's correct. A motion, can I have a second? Having a motion in a second, any questions?
This is just a parent or just?
It's a grandparent who has been donating various things to our school over the years, and for I don't even know how many years, she's donated over 100 pairs of mittens that are used when we do our, or what we've always done for our National Honor Society project. Those mittens have gone to the students, the children that we've donated our gifts to, so among other things that this woman has done. So it's a grandparent.
So we have a motion and a second. No other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Again, Beth.
You've got it, absolutely.
And finally, like I even understand what any of this is, we have a recommended action to approve the donation of six Raspberry Pi 3B Plus with 32, I'm guessing gigabytes, SD cards and power supplies, and 12 Arduino's with USB cables from Andrew Smart, a U.S. stock that's valued at $522 for the computer.
Simon was helping you.
Thank you, thank you. I can always trust my, in you, David. We have a motion, we have a motion. Do you have a motion? Second?
Second the motion.
Having a motion in a second, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? No, okay, thank you. That's all the recommended action for the night. I do not believe that there are any items of unanticipated 40 hours in advance, so I am going to turn this over for informational purposes. We will be going into executive session, but John, do you have anything prior to that for the full school committee?
Nothing before executive session, no. Thank you.
All right, thanks, John. Budget, Mo?
Just that we thank everybody for voting on Sarah's request, and we have a first meeting coming up for the '22 budget, December 1st, and that's it.
Okay, chat review, Steve.
Well, we had our meeting with Freetown on, I think it was October 27th. Get the representatives on Freetown and also their superintendent. And Mr. Plasky had a PowerPoint presentation for them. Sarah?
Steve, I can barely hear you.
We explained what the buy-in was, the cost was going to be, and how we arrived at that number. And right now, the ball's in their court. We haven't heard back yet. Aaron, is there anything else?
No, I think that was pretty clearly articulated. If you couldn't hear, the basis of the report is just that we've extended an invitation to Freetown to let us know whether they're interested in joining the district, and once we hear back from them, at that point in time, that vote would require a unanimous vote from all of our member towns. We have not heard back from Freetown as of yet. We hope to hear back in the near future.
Any questions for either Steve or Aaron?
We, question. Was there any timeframe given to them at all as to their response?
In order for their request to go on to, or to be included in town meetings, they'll need to notify us of their intention prior to the time warrants are established. So they'll have to keep the timeline of town meetings in mind so that we can make sure that if they do choose that route, it goes on the docket.
Thank you.
They were looking to get it done more sooner than later, but again, the ball, they're driving a bus right now, notifying us. Okay, Isabel, you're on.
I have nothing to report this time. We haven't had a student advisory board meeting since the, before the last meeting here because of the shutdown for the school for a short period of time due to COVID. And I have some ideas, but I'd rather get the student bodies' input on them before I share them here.
Isabel, can I ask, can you talk at all about the climate in school, you know, what kids are feeling? I mean, this is such a different time for all of them.
I know a lot of us, like, as a senior, it's hard to be at home. If I was a sophomore, I'd be like, oh, this is great, like, I'm at home for a period of time. I come back next year. It's hard knowing that the last day was in March, and it was a random day. But I know that a lot of us are trying to be positive towards like the end of the year with like our events such as prom and hopefully graduation, and hopefully sports would be a really good upbringer for morale, even without spectators. I think adding sports back to the school would add a lot of positivity to the students.
Just to add, it's been difficult to get the student advisory community together because we only have half the kids in the building, so we're meeting one group one time, another group a second time. It's tough to get everything put together, and we have some plans in place with seniors to close your, put that on hold, so it's just been a little frustrating. But they're still working hard, and their ideas are coming in, and hopefully get some things underway during the holiday season.
Okay. From the administration, the virtual tour admissions update, Aaron?
Sure. First, I'd like to thank the countless number of people who contributed to this effort. Behind the scenes, there was a lot that went into this from Mr. Trahan with his legendary smartphone, which dates back to 2016, when his basketball team was featured on CNN, Fox 25 News, and the national circuit, his 32nd genius of recording. And Mrs. Batello, and Mrs. Tuccinardi, who all really contributed to the gathering of video that allowed us to put together a really meaningful snapshot in each of our programs and throughout the school of what it is we offer. Mr. Slate from Graphic Design then put together a very comprehensive aerial view of the building that had links built into it, along with meetings, links for meetings with the administrative team, that was also present during the virtual tour. I'm thrilled to report that the numbers of applications that we are receiving this year are very comparable to those of last year, which was a record year, even with the COVID issues that we're faced with. That is a testament to the work being done by the Old Colony staff to help us with the promotion of the Old Colony program. And if you could, if you have not yet seen some of the video that was put together, it is still available on our website. If you click the Apply Now button, it will take you to the GoTo Solutions page, which is a one-size-fits-all shopping location where you can really identify all of the pieces associated with the admissions process, and view each of those respective videos. But the staff did a wonderful job of representing our programs, and I think by watching each other's videos, we have additional ideas that we can put into play. We're never done. We're always trying to figure out what we can do a little bit better, what we can tweak. Today, I received a video from Raider Lawrence Tech that was beautifully done. We'll look to replicate something like that as well in our efforts. But in the absence of face-to-face contact and the ability to welcome people into our building the way we would typically do this, we've been able to create mechanisms for delivery of information that are, have proven to be sound alternatives. So thank you to everyone who contributed to that.
Aaron, just a quick question for you. When will the lawn recruitment signs be available?
So, that's a great question, Gary. The lawn recruitment signs, we have 20 that are available now. We started with an order of 20. They're $10, which will help us cover our costs, and if people want to order lawn signs to help us with the promotional effort, we can order another order at $10 a sign. If you don't live in district, we wouldn't recommend putting a sign on your lawn because it will be less effective. But for anyone who lives in district, if you'd like a sign for your lawn, just let us know in the main office. Mr. Trahan, again, helped to orchestrate that. The folks in Graphic Design created that, and I want to thank everybody for their efforts because that's something new that we hadn't thought of. I know Mr. Trahan, we won't disclose his address, but he said, "I just need a lawn sign for my front lawn," and to cushion it because a lot of people drive by.
Madison Park partnership?
Sure. Last year, we had the opportunity to start a partnership with Madison Park High School. We had a wonderful exchange that involved about 40 students from each school and staff from each school, and administrative teams from each school who traveled. Half stayed as hosts, the other half traveled. So a total of about 80 to 90 people participated in the traveling portion. We received significant recognition for that effort on a state and national level. A lot of organization went into that. Mrs. Batello did yeoman's work in orchestrating the collaboration between the shops, and the rest of the school really did an excellent job of contributing to the spirit and the collegiality that took place. As a result, WGBH and PBS did a piece where they covered that exchange. We've since taken the webinar and created our own edits to the webinar specific to the exchange because another house building project was also covered. But in the days leading up to the webinar, we did receive outreach from another, two other organizations, one called the School Reform Initiative, the other called Pegasus Frames Education Collective, who offered to take two cohort groups, one cohort from each school, and that will include students and actually staff members that will participate in a Commitment to Equity Institute. That will be an institute that meets throughout the course of this entire year, and the students that are participating in the cohort will meet monthly in collaboration with the students from Madison Park, and we are honored that these opportunities have been extended to And we are honored that these opportunities have been extended to us at no cost. There's a significant monetary value to this that was being, that is waived by this organization. We also were approached last spring by the UMass system, which offered to put our students up with the Madison Park students for an onsite project-based learning activity where they would actually be building on the UMass campus and be in dorm rooms overnight with one another. Unfortunately, COVID resulted in a no-go of that project, but there was a significant grant written on behalf of the two schools to support the effort to further what has been a beautiful partnership for both schools. And in this day and age, I can't tell folks how proud I am that we continue to lead a charge in an area that is focused on nurture, giving back, love, care, and regard for one another on a very humane and intentional level. And the fact that our students, staff, and school have received significant recognitions at both Old Colony and Madison Park is a testament to everyone involved. I think the world needs more love, and I think that love always wins. And I think that we have a lot to be proud of and a lot to look forward to as we continue in this vein moving forward. So thank you to everyone who's been involved into the School Reform Initiative and Pegasus Springs Education Collective for their very gracious support of both programs.
If you have not had the opportunity to see the PBS webinar, and if, Aaron said it is posted, I would ask you to take the moment to see it. I was able to watch it, and even the little house on northeast, that was interesting. It was how Asavet built the house in Maine. But when it focused on the relationship between Madison Park and Old Colony and the rationale behind what was done, if you were not proud to be a member of this school, there was something wrong with you. That's all I can say. Because I left that feeling very proud of the administration of the school, the students of the school, the staff who was involved with that. It was, it reflected very, very well on us. So kudos all around to the student community, the student community, the teaching community, and clearly the administrative community.
One of the, if I may, one of the things that Shirley and I were speaking afterward, the Asavet program built a house for a disabled veteran in Maine. It wasn't a local member town. They actually went to Maine with this house that they built. They took it on a trailer. And then we got up and we spoke about how we give back and how we grow beyond our comfort zones. And one of the things I want to articulate, because we have this opportunity and this venue on social media right now, is that vocational education gives back. One of the things I'm most proud of is when I go out to our Habitat for Humanity project and I see Doug out with his kids building a house, and those kids learn the spirit of giving back. Or when our CAD students create something that then somebody puts into play in a Kushner, whether it be Pope Park Prepares or something otherwise, we give back. If it's cosmetology, making trips to the Councils on Aging in our various towns, they're giving back. Or help careers at the convalescent home, we give back. And the list is endless. And vocational education allows for this beautiful platform where our students don't only get an education based on the foundations of academia, but they have an opportunity to be exposed to what it means to move beyond our walls and be a part of our ascending communities. And nobody else has that opportunity like we do. And I think it's something we should celebrate, and I think it's something we should continue to look to expand upon. So kudos to everybody involved, and thank you for your efforts.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The last two items I'd like to comment on. First of all, the virtual tour. I attended that morning, and I was very, very impressed. In particular, the map where you can click on various parts of the building. And I mean, obviously, with the COVID situation, it was very, very difficult, impossible to do it in person. But this gave, I thought, a very good flavor of what the school can provide. Secondly, I'd like to reiterate what you said about the Madison Park webinar. I had registered but got distracted away from it that night, and Aaron was kind enough to send it along to me. I watched it, and I was, as you were, Shirley, very, very impressed. This, especially in this day and age, we need to do this. And I'd like to make note that the impetus for, or the initiation for this happened, I think, last January, or January of this year, I guess it happened. But obviously, it began before all of the, not all of the, but much of the conflict that's happened this year. It certainly is what we should be doing. And if for no other reason, you should watch it because the picture near the end of Aaron and Kevin standing together, you know, about this much distance between the top of Kevin's head and the top of Aaron's head was well worth the price of admission. It was extremely well done. And as Aaron said, I think we all should be proud.
The same height if Aaron had hair.
I was wearing, I was wearing heels too. I just want you to know that.
Those can back to that, Aaron.
All right. You have an enclosure of the Adams Scholarship 2020 recipients?
We do. We have an enclosure of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients. I would like to read their names for no other reason than to publicly recognize their achievement. Jacob Beish, Owen Bangs, Audrey Blanchard, Ashlyn Lewin, Jared Boran, Benjamin Brunette, James Caswell, Pam Chambers, Madeline Cotty, Isabel Darcy, Austin De Souza, Crystal Long, Taylor Durant, Bridget Farias, Josh Finney, Dawson Franco, Christopher Lambert, Emily Larkin, Colin Lima, Anthony McKay, Ryan McGeegan, Austin Mendez, Samantha Miller, James Mills, Carter Owen, Nicholas Papadakis, Dylan Pimental, David Quail, Dustin Staples, Sabrina Stone, Cameron Treyhan, Victoria Verrall, and Sean Wood. Congratulations to all of you.
Stem week update?
I'll turn it over to Mrs. Batello, if I may.
So we partnered with Ford Middle School. We did reach out to other Rochester Middle School, but anyway, we partnered with Ford Middle School, and 126 graders took part in our STEM activities. We offered five activities from computer science, health careers, cosmetology, culinary arts, and then a combination between possible carpentry with electrical. Four students also from Old Colony participated with their instructors in order to deliver the activities. And it was, it was an incredible participation. We offered it both on Tuesday and Thursday. Kits of parts and pieces were delivered to Kushner's schools. Thank you, Mr. Treyhan. And each class, each one of their cohorts was partnered with a partner at Old Colony, and the students were able to participate virtually in those activities. From there, we did get our connecting activities branched through the Greater New Bedford Workforce Development again this year, and we've been asked to continue those activities so that all of the sixth graders can take part in all of the five programs. So we'll be working with Kushner on that. We have a schedule developed, and we'll be delivering those activities throughout the year, this year. In addition, our business tech department was also able to offer and participate in math challenge with the students in a Kushner as well. So the sixth graders also did that. They did that a week later. So our partnership will continue with Kushner, and hopefully, we'll be able to branch out next year into other middle schools and colleges.
That's what happened with RMS. You were scheduled to go to RMS, and it just didn't work out?
Well, we, at least I personally, for some reason, we're not able to put it down.
Hopefully next year.
Assign us the times. Okay. MCAS and AP update?
Mrs. Tuccinardi is with us, so I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Tuccinardi and hope that our screen sharing will work. She's so good with her technology, she could probably hack in if she has.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. I did make a slide for tonight because sometimes when I don't have one of those, I forget everything I'm supposed to say. So I wanted to talk a little bit about AP testing from last year and what it looks like for this year, and also MCAS testing. So last year was our first academic year for advanced placement testing, and as everyone knows, 2020 was just such an unconventional year. And for testing, what that meant is that they weren't tested in multiple choice questions. They only used open response questions on AP exams. And there were widely publicized issues with AP testing this year, but our students had very few issues. Some of them had to take pictures of their answers and submit them in different ways, but they all had the chance to participate. So out of our 52 exams last year, 22 students earned the potential for college credit. And we had three students earn fives on their academic exams, which is pretty outstanding. I was thrilled when I saw that. We do have little information about what testing looks like for this upcoming spring, but we have 70 students signed up to take 75 exams in May. We have multiple students taking more than one exam. This year, we've added AP Java in grades 11 and 12, as was mentioned earlier. And we've also added AP Literature and Composition in English for grade 12 students. And we had three teachers trained this past year at College Board Summer Institutes. We had our AP Java teacher train, our AP English Literature teacher, and a pre-AP teacher trained for English. So they are all trained in vertical alignment. So for MCAS testing this year, obviously, they did not test grade 10 students last year in the spring, but our current grade 11 students are still required to earn their competency determination, which means that they get their diploma when they graduate. So grade 11 students are testing in January, mid-January, early February, both for ELA and math. They will test with legacy exams, which means that all the work we sort of just did to transition to Next Gen exams and wrap our heads around what that looks like for our students in our classrooms, we have to revert back to the legacy test for January. But we are starting with remediation programs already and classroom review. And the good news is that our teachers have worked with the legacy exam for a really long time, so they're familiar with it. Our grade 10 students will test in ELA and math in May with Next Gen exams, and we're still waiting to hear on science what that means. We're just waiting for a little more feedback about how to move forward in science. And for grade nine, our students will test in biology in June. And Desi was unclear about which standards that test would really cover, whether it was the 2006 or the 2016. So as soon as we get information about that, we will share it with our science teachers.
Any questions for Katie? Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Winter sports?
So the next piece is very heavy. It's a difficult piece for us to share. I'll say that openly, especially given Isabel's comments earlier. I think that those certainly resonate with us. I can tell you as a former high school and college coach that athletics played a major part in shaping who I am today. And so we don't take any decisions around athletics or extracurricular or any decision for that matter for our entire district lightly. That being said, we have an obligation to be consistent in the way we approach all that we do. The state has given us very clear guidelines around social distancing and what we can and cannot do in classroom settings, in our school, and in the educational forum. There has been very little intervention on behalf of the state in the area of athletics. In the fall, we made a decision to suspend all fall athletics and run them in what they have called a fall-two season that falls in between the winter and the spring season. At this point in time, we are required to make a recommendation to the school committee around a plan for the winter season. Given the nature of what we're dealing with in terms of a spike throughout the country and especially in the state of Massachusetts, given the nature of the fact that our gymnasium is currently being used as an extension of our cafeteria, and given the fact that we are asked not to co-mingle in large groups beyond a certain capacity, it is the recommendation of, I'll take this on wholeheartedly, it's my recommendation that we do not conduct winter sports because of all of these logistical hurdles that would preclude us from doing so in a manner conducive to clean operation. And we have an obligation, first and foremost, to try and provide our students with an in-person education. We just shut down our building after we saw four consecutive COVID cases over the course of four days. We were required, when we had one COVID case in one specific cohort, to shut down that entire cohort. And I can't in good conscience say that if a student goes out and participates in athletics, that the outcome would be for every student on that team who then returns to a vocational area in person, we would be required to shut down all of those vocational areas as a result of one potential case. That being said, and with much conversation that has taken place on a multitude of levels, it's our recommendation to cancel the winter sports season with hopes of running a fall-two season. It is also a conversation that took place throughout the Mayflower Athletic Conference over the course of this entire week, and a majority of the Mayflower Athletic Conference superintendents appear to be following the same suit with the same recommendations to their respective school committees. So that is a synopsis of what was a much deeper conversation, a much more extensive conversation, a lot of attempts to try and problem solve around how we might be able to make this work without interrupting the in-person learning that we've been so successful with, but we've been unable to come up with great answers. It's a very, very difficult decision because we know how much our students, coaches, and really, community feel connected to our athletic program. In the absence of athletics, we will look to do other things for our students. But at the forefront of our decision is safety and an obligation to focus first on the in-person learning. Is there any questions from the committee or any of the public in attendance? I'm more than happy to entertain those questions.
Madam Chair?
Paul?
I share Aaron's sentiment. It really is awful that this has to be done. But given what's happening in the country, in the state, and even in our region, the numbers appear to be going no place but up at the moment. And I'm sure that if they get down to a, whatever is considered a reasonable level, we can always revisit this. I played sports in high school. I recognize the value. I, I recognize the value of them. I view them as simply one more classroom, a place to learn perhaps more life lessons. And I'm, I really wish we didn't have to do this, but I don't see any other choice.
Anyone else? I'm just going to echo what Aaron said. I know this was a gut-wrenching decision for the administration, including our athletic director, who is so devoted to the athletes of this school. Anybody who's paid attention knows that in Massachusetts, hockey rinks are having a difficult time staying open. We have, if I'm not mistaken, three sports, men and, I'm sorry, boys and girls basketball and hockey. Those are the sports that will be affected. When Aaron and I spoke about it, I couldn't even understand how the logistics of basketball would work, how, you know, to send this post up against each under, under a basket, try not to sweat on each other, what you do with a ball, all of it. It's, it's just the extent of what you would have to go through. Never mind what Aaron has said about how we use our gym. And what happens if one student is adversely affected by, by even a potential virus contact? How that will ripple through not only his team, but a JV team, the other school, bringing it into another school? It's, it's just not an easy decision. And those of us who had children who, high school sports was a major part of their lives. I had, my kids were student athletes. I know what sports meant to them and continues to mean to them and how difficult this is. But I believe that the administration has chosen the correct path and let's just see where it takes us. Matt, I know you're there and I don't want to put you on the spot. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, first of all, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just, speaking from the heart, I mean, I feel as though, you know, there's something missing at this point for me. It's just, it's, you know, I also have the opportunity to coach and work very closely with the student athletes and I totally respect Isabel Darcy's comments because I, you know, you feel those things. You feel, you know, the connections with your, with your student athletes and we certainly care about their well-being beyond athletics. It's, it's, you know, cumulative. We work, we work together in the building and through athletics, and this was not an easy decision. I echo Aaron's sentiments. Our number one goal is to remain open and, you know, we're going to do everything we can to provide them with, with opportunities and outlets through the winter. But unfortunately, with the modifications that the MIAA is recommending and with our space, we would, we would be in direct violation across the board. And unfortunately, that's, that's not where we want to be. You know, it is a very, very heavy situation with the fall-two. That was a possibility of, you know, from the fall-one to fall-two, you know, you have, you have the ability to possibly have a season. This is in fact a cancellation, so it has that much more weight to it. And I do support the administration and the decision of the school committee.
Any comments, questions?
Let him fix his clock, will you?
Okay.
I just, I just want to speak real quickly to Mr. Trayhan and his incredible ability to separate coaching from the role of athletic director. We sat in my office and he said, as a coach, these are my kids. I can't even imagine not wanting to do whatever it takes to have them get out on the court. He said, as an athletic director, as part of an administrative team, I can't imagine creating a shockwave that would go through the school and result in our having to shut down after all the work our instructors have put in to make in-person learning happen. And people like Mr. Trayhan don't come around every day. And to not recognize it publicly in a forum like this, I would be remiss. And it's not just Mr. Trayhan, it's every member of our administrative team who operates from that perspective and thinks deeply about what is best for our students and their families. And this is a known situation. But Mr. Trayhan, I just want to commend you for the way you approached the situation in its entirety, for the incredible composure and contribution you made to the discussions that took place because I know how difficult it was.
Thank you, Mr. Polanski.
Mike, what's the spirits here?
Yeah. I just want to say, you know, Matt's been unbelievable. I've been watching since we closed down in March. Just, I don't know how many hours you put in on committees, Matt, trying to get this to work. And if anybody can get it to go in the fall, fall-two and the spring, you can do it. But with that said, we're going to continue to look for ways to get these kids involved. We're throwing around all kinds of different ideas. We're running a program right now with some conditioning, which we did also in the spring. So we're trying to get the kids involved as much as we possibly can. So Matt, we'll continue to work together in that light and hopefully we can come up with something good for these kids. I want to go back quickly to the John Abigail Adams Scholarship. For the past two years, we have done celebrations in school, ceremonies in school to honor these kids. We will continue to do that this year in December. Probably be a hybrid model, some sort of the kids be honored in school in person and their parents will be, you know, watching virtually from home. But we, we feel so important to continue to do these things so they don't continue to lose anything else that they've been missing out on these, these days. As far as my report today, I want to focus on kind of three different areas. First, my newsletter, if you have a chance to look at this, it's the second edition of the probably new and improved newsletter, a little more interactive. Do you have any questions on that? You can ask me after, after I do the presentation. One other thing I want to add to this, and it kind of goes in the same way as trying to get more kids involved outside of school, it's going to be called Life Outside Old Colony. We have so many people, students, staff, that do things outside of school that may give other kids opportunities to get involved. And one of the things I'm going to point out is, you know, there's a little article in there on Mr. Blackburn, who goes up to New Hampshire and he participates in drag racing. And after a couple of years of finishing second, he actually won the outlaw series up there. I was able to go up with a few teachers and watch him. It was, it's a really cool thing. If you haven't seen it, it's a great spot. It was beautiful. You sit there on the side and watch, bring airplay, it's very loud. But we're, we're going to continue to do that, to showcase teachers and staff who do things outside of school. It might be something kids can do. Next, next, next series, I'm going to kind of highlight Jason Palmieri, a special education teacher who just finished climbing all 48, 4,000 foot mountains in New Hampshire. He did it a very short amount of time and it's a, it's a really neat accomplishment. So we'll be featuring him. And I'll also be featuring students in this segment. Isabel is a prime example of what she does outside of school with her dancing, which a lot of kids can make about her and say, hey, how do I get involved? I can't, I can't play volleyball now, I can't play basketball. Maybe I like to dance. So we're going to highlight those types of things in the upcoming letters. The around the campus, I put on the agenda basically just to, I want to let you guys know what's going around school that is positive. Today, we had a great PD day. We had some tremendous presentations by teachers to their colleagues around best practices and how they're working to reduce springtime for kids. And both, we had academic teachers and vocational teachers. They were tremendous. Sergio Bedrosa for the English Department did a great piece. And then also two of our electrical faculty, Gary LaBonne and Larry Medermas were tremendous in their presentation. They were kind of captivating the audience the whole time. So it was really neat to see how, what people are doing and, you know, it's spreading into the whole, to the whole group. We'll continue with our curriculum project with the staff. We're in a great place. Teachers continue to work out as I walked around the building. They're all engaged and I think we're in a good spot there. It was mentioned earlier, the Coopers Den is now going to do curbside takeout. So Gary, did you hear that? So that's going to be an awesome thing. We got, we got a place set up outside, set up outside the Coopers Den where people just come out, grab their food and take it away. On the day we, we had the PD day and the students were engaged in the financial literacy certificate. I think it was very, very effective. To date, we have 388, I believe, if I'm wrong, Katie, correct me, students who earned the certificate, leaving probably 190 something or whatever kids. We're still working on getting that, but our goal is to have 100% of the kids gain that certificate because we think it's very, very important. So that's that. And then my last piece, I wanted to do some special recognitions because again, there's some people around this building who do some amazing things. I want to start with our nurses. Deb Levesque is here today. Deb Levesque and Lindsay Mato, if you see the reports they put out on a daily, weekly basis, it's just amazing to keep us updated and the work they do with the CDC is tremendous. The research they do, the knowledge they've gained, we just go to them with pressure and they, they have it right there. Our two nurses today also did an uplifting piece during the PD day. I didn't, Mr. Trayhan, I didn't get the video on that, but I don't think Deb wanted to show it, but she, she brought, she brought the staff to the feet, doing some dancing and got in a really good mood before they did their PD. So these two women are amazing. I can't say enough about them. So thank you very much, girls. I don't know if Lindsay's here, but I think she's in the studio recording music or something. Tucker?
No, I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you for joining us and taking your time. Again, another great example of what, what these teachers and staff do outside of, of school. She's a performer, singer, so it's amazing.
Also a vocal instructor, right?
Yep, yep.
Yes, I am.
You'll be featured, Lindsay, don't worry.
I'll sing the National Anthem when, when we get sports back. How about, how about that?
We're going to hold you to that.
I will, I promise.
And then finally, the area you guys are sitting in right here today is now affectionately became, become known as Area 476 after our address. The kids in here, coming from full academics, are doing amazing things. I just wanted to recognize the instructors that are in here. This phase put this program together, but the payoff professionals that run this program are amazing. Jen Hendricks, Alex Soares, Chip Adamholland, work for these kids every single day. We're up to about 15, 16 kids each cycle. The goal is obviously to get these kids to up to speed and then hopefully they can get back out on their own remotely, but we don't want to do that too soon. So that's pretty much what I have and I think great things are happening around, around school. So thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Parker?
No, but just a thank you. Your energy is awesome. And again, it's appreciated.
We charge the wood upward. Thank you. He has done it.
There you go.
Okay. Meeting dates, Budget Subcommittee is meeting the first week of December, it's either December 1st or 2nd. Sorry that it is not on the agenda. And our next district school committee is on December 16th. We will be going into executive session for purposes of collective binding, litigation. We will not be returning to open session. So I need to take a roll call vote of school committee members. I'm going to start, Mr. Foster.
Don Foster, yes.
Yes.
Don Williams, yes.
I said yes.
Kirk, yes.
Gary Mansfield, yes.